All right, we'll call to order this special meeting, our Capital Improvements Program Workshop for Monday, September the 20th, 2021 at four o'clock PM. With that, roll call and certification of a quorum. We do have a quorum available. Member Perez Hernandez in Orlando are out of the chamber currently. Everyone else is here, but do expect the other council members to be here shortly. With that, citizens comments, Madam Secretary, did we receive any? Okay, all right, moving on to new business and just kind of read into the topic of discussion, Capital Improvements Program, CIP update series for drainage and facilities. With that, we'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for your extra time. This is the second workshop that we've scheduled such as this to provide you another opportunity to have an update on our very important and very large capital improvement program. The topic tonight, as you said, is facilities and drainage. The next, we had one on water wastewater system, and I believe we'll be doing transportation up next. So we are slotting these in the calendar you'll see on Monday night for 2022 council meetings. These will all be laid out, so we'll have plenty of time to prepare for those. So with that, we've got a very similar template that worked well for us on the first one and turn it over to staff to introduce this to you and provide the overview. We've got opportunities to break and get comments after facilities, after drainage, and then after the stormwater fee discussion. So you can weigh in on each of those, you won't have to wait.
Okay, I'm glad you said, I was just gonna interrupt and let's get through facilities. We'll have question and answer, and then we'll each one.
Exactly. Thanks, sir.
Trent Roberts.
Good evening, say I'm stuck on good evening, but good afternoon, Mayor Council. As Mr. Pearson stated, is that this will be a continued discussion and continue in a series. This is our second meeting with regards to the CIP update, and with that, we'll continue moving forward and we'll specifically talk about these items. So one of the things that we always talk about is planning with purpose. We have facilities, drainage infrastructure model, stormwater utility fee, and then near term and upcoming priorities for projects. Each of these will be discussed in terms of the project milestones in each topic. And then, Mayor, as you stated, is that we will have a question and answer after each one. So there'll be one after facilities, one after drainage, and then a final culmination question and answer period after the stormwater utility fee. So as we always start, as we started last time in our water and wastewater model, and we start with any of our CIP and also with the city plans, is to have a strategic purpose, strategic priorities working, and then that melds into our comprehensive plan. And to do all that, we start looking at water and wastewater models. We start looking at drainage, infrastructure, thoroughfare plan, multimodal, all these feed in together to help formulate our capital improvement plan, help continue with land use all the way down. So this is our entire planning with a purpose. Also let you know, moving forward, is that these are the meetings that are set in the future. So coming up in December is our transportation and parks, then in March is a true CIP workshop with you all shortly after the early budget session. So at this time, I'd like to start our first priority as we go through, as we go forward, will be a discussion on facilities. And so at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Priya. Priya is our Internal Services Manager, and she will be going through our facilities and talking to you a little bit about the items in our existing sites.
Thank you, Mr. Upton. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As of September 2020, the total asset value for city facilities was 97.948 million. To provide an overview of growth, prior to 2001, our city facility square footage totaled This was serviced and maintained by four facility maintenance staff positions. Over the span of 20 years, we have added 296,375 square feet and have continued to have four facility maintenance staff service and maintain this growth. At present, we have 216,373 square feet in construction. Looking past 2023, we have 85,330 square feet planned for future capital improvement projects for facilities. As city facilities are constructed, we have not only expanded in space, but also the technology within our buildings, such as HVAC, lighting controls, building automation, generators, and other electrical and mechanical infrastructure, while our existing staff has not been able to keep up with this demand. With this, we are working on conducting a facility staffing study to identify service levels, review other major outsourcing contracts, and receive recommendations on staffing and other potential certifications and trainings to allow more in-house services. Next slide. This graph illustrates our total facility square footage over time with correlation to our maintenance staff. We have had continued growth in our facility space, but have not added positions to our maintenance staff. The blue columns identify our square footage prior to 2015, with our existing space stacked in green, along with in-construction in yellow, and future square footage in red. We are underway with implementation of our City Works Asset Management software. This software will benefit greatly to city facilities and our facility maintenance division as it will define assets, capture inventory to strategically schedule proactive maintenance, log repairs, along with equipment, labor, and material cost, and budget for replacements. The capabilities of this software will allow staff to accurately identify asset location, manage data, optimize life cycles, track work orders, build custom reports, and prioritize and define operational budgets and capital improvement projects. Staff has been working with PBK, who's conducting our facilities condition assessment. PBK completed the first assessment March of this year. This assessment included three buildings, the Public Safety Building, the Recreation Adatorium, and the Melvin Knapp Center. We are currently assessing the second phase, which includes the Fire Administration Building, fire stations three and five, the West Side Event Center, Stella Roberts Recycling Center, and the Hill House Annex. Facilities built or renovated after 2018 are not included in these two assessments, but can be considered for any future assessments we have. Assessment findings will identify maintenance and repair priorities, provide recommendations for operational enhancements and replacement life cycles. These priorities and replacement schedules will be built into our City Works Asset Management System to allow for operational and maintenance planning. Along with the facility condition assessment, staff is also working with leaf engineering on a generator assessment that will assess 37 of our generators. This was a winter storm yearly after action item. This assessment will provide a comprehensive inspection and summary evaluation report on each generator to include recommendations for ownerization, corrective actions and measures, estimated costs and priorities, update generator specifications, and provide recommendations for replacement. Assessment findings will also be built into our City Works Asset Management software and also to our outsourced generator contract for future preventative maintenance and repairs. Now I'd like to hand it back to Mr. Upton to provide an update over our in-construction facilities.
Thank you, Priya. With regard to this collage that is provided here shows those facilities that are in construction with the square footage that is allocated to them, that adds to our needed facility maintenance and our staff that will be required to maintain these as well. You can see West Side Library, additional 40,000 square feet, down to Shadow Creek Ranch Park, and working with our partners at the Parks Department to maintain approximately 6,000 square feet of facility there. Additionally, I'd like to spend some time talking, a few minutes about our Orange Street Service Center. As many of you are aware, we are currently in the Phase One construction period. This is the two-story administration wing. The site currently houses approximately 20% of our city staff. This is all the public works and engineering will be housed there. We currently still have parks, operations based out of there, and we also still have the animal shelter will be based out of here and their staff until the new animal shelter is put online next year. Approximately, again, about 20% of our city staff is housed out of this facility. Emergency operations and capabilities are planned as we are expanding to get into Phase Two. So basically, all of emergencies for distribution and collection, water and wastewater are housed and stored out of here. This is a staging and response facility as well. Again, all of our materials, piping, et cetera, is to help our customers out on a daily basis, but then also during times of emergency. So currently, our Phase One houses about 19,000 square feet. That'll be the engineering and public works administration portion. Phase Two is about 40,000 square feet of warehouse and office space in there for the day-to-day operations and the emergency operations as well, for our field services. But this has also led to constraints with the size that's there is that we will also need to be relocating a couple of our divisions as well, taking a look at our Hill House Road Annex Center, taking a look at trying to be more centrally located for fleets and parks in this response. So our fleet department facility would be built and the grass area to the north right now of the existing traffic operations center, and then parks will have their operations facility located there as well, centrally located. Each of these facilities, both that Hill House and the Orange Street Operations Center are hardened facilities, meaning that we will stage emergency operations out of there, gives good staging and response, and this is an additional approximate 25,000 square feet here at this site. As we proposed and provided to you all in our water and wastewater, the same graphic or table chart associated with facilities and what we're expanding over the next five years in facilities. Now I'd like to spend a couple of minutes talking about our upcoming projects of completion. As you're aware, our fire training burn building was recently completed and is being seasoned by the fire department, meaning that they need to do control burns inside and get those plates seasoned before they start having their training in there. Orange Street Service Center, as we talked about, is in construction. Library, Fire Station Four, of course, and our animal shelter will be completed early next year. These are facilities that'll be upcoming in contracts that you'll be forthcoming, that you will see, Council, in the coming year. These are also selected either by design bid build, construction manager at risk. Those were designed, and these are the planned construction contracts that'll be forthcoming to you during a council, future council meeting. This will be the police training center. This is old Fire Station Four to be renovated to our police training center, and then, of course, the rec center and additorium chiller replacement. As was mentioned earlier, talking about future facilities and square footage, these are future in the next five years, taking a look out is fire stations, seven, 11, five, and 10. Each of these run about 10,000 square feet each. At police firearms range and driver training, we're looking about 7,000 to 8,000 square feet. And then, taking a look at our senior center, a request, of course, is to expand that senior center by doubling, which would be about another 10,000 square feet. So at this time, I'd like to turn this back over, Mayor, to you, or to Council, I'm sorry, to City Manager Pearson, turn over to if there's any questions at this time.
So thank you, Robert, and again, thanks for, Council, for the opportunity to share on our facilities. These are things, obviously, we are essential to our operations, but, you know, not really thought about until you're there, you need them, and that's why it's important to plan and think about it when, at this time. So welcome any questions or feedback on the presentation. Thanks.
Yeah, so we'll open it up for questions, comments from council members on facilities. Anybody got anything? Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that just jumped out on the slide that showed some of the cost, I think it was slide six.
Slide?
Sixteen. Yeah, slide sixteen, that, I know we debated that provision storage facility down at the bottom. Is that, should that be .75 million? Are we talking 750,000?
This is, I think, just.
This is just the design contract. So please take a look at the top here, Councilman Carbone, is that upcoming design contract. So this is the budget set set up for design.
Gotcha, okay. And then, in regards to the generator assessment, with Hill House being right around the corner from the PSB and the new Fire Station, all that, if we had any discussions, I assume those are all on the same grid from CenterPoint standpoint?
Are you, with regards to the actual PSB site?
Right.
Yes, they are. That site is on the same grid.
As Hill House?
I'm not positive on that. They sometimes move grids around where circuits are located. I'd have to do some checking with CenterPoint, our colleagues over there, to find out if Colin may be a split on circuits.
Yeah, it just, I don't know, seems like those geographically are fairly close, and it'd be nice to know that, and I guess where I was headed is, I know, you know, ERCOT's working on some reliability factor and potentially dropping some big gen sets at different substations. So I was wondering if we had any idea if we could get some input on making, if this is the same circuit potentially, and urging them to look at that circuit to keep up. That way, we've got a little bit more redundancy from an operational standpoint. Or a priority list.
So one of the things that has been, staff has already been through, our energy provider, which is TXU, has submitted the list to update to CenterPoint all of our critical facilities, and then that is passed through to CenterPoint. We've also gone the other way too, and notified CenterPoint that that request with the list of what needs to be on both ways, but there is a proper process that has to be followed, but we try to hit them from both sides.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any others?
I just want to mention on this emergency provision storage facility, what would be contained in there?
Currently, Councilman Owen, right now, we work with our emergency operations center, and currently, right now, what's been asked has been storing water, auto water, et cetera, that has been requested at this time. Also, if there's emergency provisions for staff or also residents, they've talked about long-life storage, food, but then also potential other materials necessary for city staff as well, outside of our current emergency locations.
I was wondering, Adrian and I were both at the opening of the art of the groundbreaking over there for the Christian Hipping Hands, and they are gonna be building a new building, and they have one, what's it known, Swenson over there, of a facility that they need to either lease out or they need to go in and sell that facility as soon as they, that was one that we started several years ago, and we got contractors in Houston builders there to do it as a charity type thing, and the people in Arland, you know, the O'Days and the others that was involved in it, they donated a lot of the stuff to go through there to build it and materials and stuff, but that one, I think it's 4,000 square feet, I believe what it is, and it has a reefer in it at the same time. And, you know, I mentioned it to Ms. Dixon out here the other day, and she said, yes, you know, they would love to try to either lease it out or to sell it, one of the two. And it does have a reefer in there also, the office spaces in there, it could be, you know, manipulated, but they did over, what, 1.4 million pounds of food out of there this past year, so it's quite a bit of quantity there, and it's right across the street from the Alexander School over there. I think, you know, I'd like to see if we could take a look at that and see if there's an opportunity that we could utilize that facility, rather than us going out and building one, that one is a good facility.
Just kind of dovetail on that. Mayor, if I understand correctly, this was, this was, the storage facility was your?
Yeah, so let me, and, yeah, so after the, after the freeze, just looking, and anytime we have a real major storm, obviously Nicholas wasn't as bad as what sometimes happens, but we all know there's a scramble for provisions, water and other things in 36 to 72 hours after a storm. So the thought was, if we had grant dollars and grant dollars could help, you know, secure a space, could we have something and build our own, call it strategic, supply of after, you know, after a storm, after an event, so we have it ready, available. Under normal, well, what I've heard from most of the water companies and others, most of them will donate water to have for these types of purposes. In addition to a full truckload of water is about $3,000 to $5,000 to purchase, it's not real expensive. And so the idea was, you know, just how can we plan for and have after the event for our community and be ready for that? Obviously, we want to encourage as many people as possible to take care of theirselves and have provisions, but we also know there's gonna be a certain segment of the population that they're just, they're just not gonna have it. So making sure that we've got something like that available. So that was the thought behind it. And I will say, Clay, probably, maybe this, maybe this week, I know Peter put a white paper out on this back in March.
Yeah, I just asked if we could dredge it up, I'll send it out to you, because it went through the logic and that, and like you said, it was acute with the winter free storm, but every time we have an event, there's needs for supplies and a little bit of scrambling. I think what you saw, you're trying to avoid the scramble and pre-plan and prepare for that. We have need for water regularly for our operations, particularly, fire department uses that in training, so there'd be a cycle that would bring that in and out, and so, like you said, there's a paper that describes that.
Yeah, so I think it'd be good to put that back out, because it had all of that, it also had kind of recurring costs to keep it fresh, whatnot, you know, what's gonna be in there, so.
And I appreciate that clarification. I'll tell you, personally, it's your initiative, you were kind of hands-on, I kind of honor that you want to move forward with it, at least enough to get on the capital improvement project, but each time we're talking about CIP or this, we tend to debate about whether it's necessary or whether it's useful and how we're gonna fund it, certainly two different items. I don't, I think, in honoring the council members who may not be fully, fully on board with this as of yet, I think, you know, for tonight, let's leave it on the CIP, but perhaps once we're a little bit later in the year, maybe we have a workshop, we discuss it, we get on the same page, we can discuss, do we want to give staff direction to go find an existing facility or build a new facility, kind of get some clarification on that. So I just don't want it to be one of those projects. It's a low-value project, so it's not the one that we should be debating the most with all the CIP, but I don't, I just don't want it to stumble over there being inconsistency with what we're trying to provide, the direction we're trying to provide staff. And I mean, I certainly don't want to get too much into what we're planning to store there, if we're just saying we want a multi-use storage facility, and it can take water, it can take MREs, you know, maybe you could staff some equipment that's necessary like that, you know, I don't think we're there yet, but maybe just as a follow-up to this, we just have a quick workshop on a red gen item, let's just workshop it, let's see if we can get on the same page, give staff direction before we can start handing out money to design something that we may not even be behind. That's my only comment on that. Since we're on facilities, one question, I want to have follow-up probably with Trent. If we were to have an initiative for us to go and winterize all of the generators, would that, would we put that under the facilities CIP? Would that go into another budgetary item outside of the CIP?
I think that would be the appropriate place for it, and, you know, we'd have to look at the size and value of that to figure out how we fund that.
So it may be a little preliminary, and I know y'all are still evaluating whether that's the best way to go, but perhaps we can just... But perhaps we can just put a mark on that for us to continue to look at whether that's a valuable endeavor for us, kind of reactionary to Yuri, winterize it and just get a little, the opportunity for maybe there'd be better performance and if a similar event was to happen.
Sure, I think, you know, that's part of the evaluation, is what will it take to winterize those? What kind of cost and are associated with that? And what the real cost-benefit, you know, analysis is there for the long term?
If I could, just to back up a wee bit, you know, so this update series, the feedback is great and this will help us. But, you know, we're updating on the CIP that the council just adopted. The emergency provisioned storage was in there, and understand that that's an open item and we'll flag that. And we're doing the, you may have walked in a little bit late, not heard that, but the generator update, that's underway. And so when we get that, that'll lead to a CIP or and/or budget items upcoming.
Yeah, and my apologies for being late. And if that was discussed, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure if that's going to be on, if that's a facilities project in the CIP, where we are, if it's not, we're not prepared to add it yet. And if we, when we do add it, that this is where it'll be. I do think, kind of addressing your concern, I just, I think the emergency provisioned facility, we seem to have had numerous comments on it. I just want to give us an opportunity to, as a council, get on the same page. That way, each time it's brought up, we're not giving you alternative direction. If we, I mean, if we as a council decide, hey, that's not the way we want to move forward, and let's not spend money to design it. If we do want to go with specific provisions utilizing existing facility or other limitations, let's just do that now before we get too far down the road. And then staff's response is, look, it's been on the CIP, you gave us direction. And then it just makes a more difficult project to move forward at that point.
I agree. I think that's a good way to look at it. Remember Owens, real quick?
Yeah, a couple of other two that was in there that was noted as a, in the police, is a firearm range and driving training facility at seventeen point three million dollars.
In the future, CIP, there is identified an opportunity and the need for that. We've got some very, very, very early, I can't remember what year, if you've got that handy, it's way out there in the CIP, but-
Yeah, it is. It was just in the list of information that was going in there. And there's one other one that, for the in-house training and training for, in the police academy is part of it. And then the training center, three point six million. And then there's a statement in there that we're, we're doing training for about ninety other agencies, I believe, was what it was stated. And doing that is the need to increase this because we're doing so much training on the outside?
No, we've got our academy, the council's awarded that contract for the design of that, so that's underway. That'll be the rehab of the old Fire Station Four building. And it's driven by our own in-house training needs for the academy and all that. I think ancillary, we have the opportunity to host on occasion. So that ninety's probably cumulative over a couple of years, but that's what it is. It's not driven by that.
And I was just wondering if we get revenue for training at ninety other agencies?
No, all that training, I mean, when we go and send people, I mean, there may be, they go up to Texas A&amp;M, you know, there may be a tuition charge, something like that, but it's all nominal. And you're just like police and fire, we offer and we get as much as we go.
Yeah, looking at this Orange Street Service Center, Phase Two, overall cost, I think twenty-eight and a half million dollars, four hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot, seems extremely high to me. I'm just reading an article here, and it's a recent article that you can build a custom-made home, very high-end, for four hundred dollars a square foot. And taking into consideration, a lot of this building is going to be drive-through service for our new vehicles, which would seem like, you know, a big warehouse with concrete flooring. This seems like an exorbitant amount. And we went through the same thing with the animal facility. You guys started out at fifteen million, and we ended up squeezing you down to ten. I'm just not comfortable with twenty-eight and a half million dollars for four hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot for what amounts to a lot of this just being open space. Any comments?
Probably lots. I mean, the frame of reference would be any number of other facilities that are built like this around. And I don't know if custom homes is a very good at all reference. I don't think we're going to have the same power generation and technology, everything else, but Robert, can you go into that?
Sure. Mr. Pearson, Councilman Little, is that it's redevelopment of the entire site. It's not just the square footage there. We have all the parking, all the ancillary areas around for all of our vehicles to be at. Drainage in there. Also, we have some material storage areas associated with that as well. Taking down of the existing buildings, disposing of those, it's a full-site redo. It is not, it's not the most applicable way to take budget and just divide by the square footage of the warehouse. It's the entire site.
Question for you. A third of that is through COs. We put this somewhere not in COs because I understand the concern with the cost, Councilman. But I understand also, you're tearing down and you're building up, and that costs money. It is such a critical asset. Don't we have dollars beyond the COs?
So, Member Cam Carr, a big portion of that project's being paid for out of the water sewer revenue?
Two-thirds of it, yeah.
Yes, sir. And so I think that the, you know, the only other source we have on the general fund side would be COs. And I do believe that fits within our CO policy that's been adopted.
Would it be unreasonable to squeeze out something else so we can put this a hundred percent in water sewer revenue bonds?
I think we have to look at what the building is applicable to and what it's used for and who it houses, and then assign those-
Is that like a maybe?
Appropriately.
Is that maybe?
No, I'm saying that we've got general fund people that are going to operate out of that building, and we need to pay for that portion of the building with general funds.
All right, so can we do that at general funds with cash?
With that amount of cash, I mean, it doesn't seem like it, but-
I just, buying, paying twenty-year debt for a facility we're going to build out and then go into M&amp;O is hard. I'm very appreciative that two-thirds of this is in the water sewer revenue funds that's recurring. And I understand the one-third, two-thirds and what the use is. But this is about priorities. I think this is a big priority for the public works guys. And I think if we're going to do that, I just don't want to put this on the credit card. That's a statement. I'm not asking, I just don't want to put it on the credit card.
Member Little, were you complete?
I guess I didn't get an answer to the part about, can we look at savings in the future on this building like we did the library? I'm sorry, the animal facility. We were able to get that down by almost a third.
I don't know if we, quote-unquote, I mean, we progressed as the natural from having a budget number to actually designing it, to doing the engineering on it, to seeing what we had. So, I mean, that's the natural process, and just want to go through that as well.
Mr. Pearson, I'd like to add, real quick, is that one of the things is, is that this will be done by a construction manager at risk as well. We'll have cost estimates along the way as we're finishing design so that we can make sure we manage those costs and find ways to save, just like we did with the animal shelter.
I will say, from, and, you know, comparing this facility to, you know, home, home construction is apples and oranges. But I think it is fair to say, commercial construction to commercial construction, because that's what it is. It's commercial construction. What I don't know is how much, like underground, because if this is going to be fleet maintenance and those types of things, is that going to be done there? Is fleet maintenance over at Hill House?
The plan due to the constrictions of the site is to move fleet maintenance over to Hill House so that it can be more centrally located to all of our hub main customers.
Yeah, so, you know, typically, you know, basic construction, basic, you know, commercial construction. And this is site improvements, parking lots, site improvements, drainage, you know, interior, interior build-out, the whole thing, you know, two fifty, three hundred bucks a square is kind of normal. And I think that's where the council member's kind of getting a little, four hundred dollars a square. And I get it, it's a planning document until we get more of a understanding of exactly what the project is. And also understand there's a cost associated with demo. But under normal circumstances, you've got land to buy, you've got, you know, those types of things as well. So there are offsets when you, when you start talking about the development world in the private sector and what they're looking at. So I think that's the concern that you're hearing. So hopefully, we can, as always, crunch those numbers and get them down, so. Anything?
I have a quick question on the firearms range and driver training facility. I know that's in the future, but just from maybe a potential cost recovery perspective, conversations I've had with the EPOA on, I guess, currently some of our officers having to drive pretty far to get certifications and things like that. So is this going to give us the opportunity to reduce those overtime costs and paying other, you know, facilities and so forth? And if so, what is that going to look like over the life of the facility? I'm just kind of curious. And you don't have to answer it now, it's a question that you can get back with me on, Ron.
Well, just, so right now, we send a hundred and seventy-some odd officers down to Lake Jackson three, four times a year, and that's just for basic qualification and training. And so if there's any additional training, then there's, of course, more trips. And we send officers to Pasadena for, but, you know, but these are driving-to-work issues. Where it will save us money is being able to get more officers through more courses. And the ones that do have vehicles won't be, you know, burning that gas. But it's pretty much a negligible cost. They're going to be, they'd either be driving at work or driving to the range.
Okay. And I figured it'd take a long time to get up to that number, but still, you know, I'm just kind of curious what that would be.
I think it's more of a convenience factor at this point, you know, because we do have to take an officer out of service for almost an entire day to get them down there. So we would be recovering quite a bit of productivity. I don't know how we would quantify that at this point.
I guess that'd maybe be an HR question, so we're gonna, maybe Larry can do a follow-up on that. That's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Member Orlando, any other questions?
Yeah, man, I had some. Can we pull up FA nineteen oh two, FA two one zero six, and FA two two oh three?
Councilman Cam Carr, you're talking out of the CIP, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's in the packet.
Member Cam Carr, can you repeat the project numbers again?
Nineteen oh two, twenty-one oh six, and two-two oh three. Orange, Hill House, and then Aditorium.
This is what it's for.
They're going to say we didn't talk about it, or we did, right?
Exactly.
So we're going to talk about it now.
Exactly. The reason why I wanted these workshops, so we can get questions asked and answered in the middle of the year.
How much money do we have in this facility, says the total amount that we're looking on short-term to-
What are you, I'm getting there.
This is getting bad when you figure out what I'm going to talk about.
All right, what is this one? I can't, okay, sorry. Nineteen oh two, which is Orange Street. Nine point nine in COs, as was discussed with Mr. Epperson. One-third is COs, two-thirds is water revenue bonds. That's nine point one million. For the CIP, for next year for facilities, is forty-six million dollars. Thirty-eight point five is in these three projects, and nine point one is here. So I'm just going to hold that in your mind, nine point one in COs, nine point one in COs. Can we go to project two one zero six, which is Hill House? Really great project. We talked about this. This is eight point eight of the eleven point eight million. This is roughly seventy-five percent in COs. And then lastly is twenty-two oh three, which is a much smaller number, thankfully. Two-two zero three, sir. And this is an Aditorium, I guess, air handling, I guess it's that time. It's three point two, all in COs. That's for next year. That's twenty-one point one million COs. It's fifty-four percent of all of these projects, all rounded up. And like I said, these three projects are essentially a little more than five-sixths of the entire facilities budget. I don't want to belabor the point. This is at the project level. These are critical path items. It is critical for me to look out for the taxpayer. I really, really, really would encourage us to find dollars in the budget out of some other place besides COs. And that's the only statement I want to say on that.
I mean, I just, maybe as a response, I think that's probably the most appropriate tool that we have for projects of this size or their origin of nature. We've had discussions in the past about developing policies for COs. This is kind of in keeping with those policies. I think before we start eliminating project-for-project COs, we probably need to give staff better direction on what that policy is before we change direction on particular projects. I think, I mean, it does sound great, and look, as a taxpayer, I would love to see us try and find a way to do these pay-as-you-go. It just, it would cause us a lot more problems than we solve, based on what I see from the budget. We'd either reduce our cash in hand, which would cause us issues with our bond rating, along with other, other issues. If we have emergency expenditure, we have the inability to react. Or we have to raise the, raise the tax rate in order to be able to get the cash in hand so we can do it. So I mean, I think if the rest of the council wants to kind of move in that direction, I'm fine with it. But I think right now, staff's kind of following the policy we already set in place. I just hate to get too wrapped up in stalling these projects if we're not all on board with eliminating that revenue.
Member Perez, I think there's two things that really struck me the last two weeks. We had a very long, drawn-out discussion about raising the water rates nine percent. And then we argued and discussed, and we made them do some very painful cuts to get to five percent. We're going to add forty-eight, sorry, forty-six million dollars. Two-thirds will be on the water revenue, and eighty-three percent on three projects. We're just saying, we're advocating right now indirectly, raise the water rate again. I mean, that's what we're doing. And I struggle with that because we're building facilities that have to do maintenance. On the maintenance side is one thing. The build-out is the hard part. If these are the critical path items, they should be on the budget, and we should deal with them in one year and get on with it. That's just my philosophy. On the CO portion of the policy, we reviewed the policy earlier this year, and we tightened up the reasons to do the policy. And it was not just because the barn door was wide open on that, and we were trying to narrow that. We discussed that. It's about getting bang for the buck. If we get three other dollars from some other source or two other dollars, it makes sense for us to do a CO. We had that discussion. We are tightening that up. We will continue, I'm guessing, to tighten that up. I agree with you. At some point, you have to do things, but we don't have to eat everything at one time. That's all, that's the only point I'm trying to say. Because at the end of the day, we don't end up eating, we're just taking dollars and food off the taxpayers' table.
I just don't, I don't see it as if we're taking food off of anybody's table. I think what we tend to do is get wrapped, get ourselves wrapped up a lot in budget about cutting tax dollars and that being our most primary role. But the rest of the year, we're- But the rest of the year, we're more wrapped up in the services we want to provide, the facilities we need to improve, uh, improving the, um, uh, the, the work quality for our employees, which all of these kind of wrapped up into. So, I mean, I, I guess philosophically, we just don't see it the same, which is fine. I just don't want to get staff too much into, in this year's budget and next year's budget, trying to find cash in hand for projects that we just don't have the cash for. The, the opportunity would be there if we want to increase the rate, but I, I don't know that we have that kind of cash in the budget. I mean, we've compressed it. When the last time we went through, we found $750,000 we may, may or may not do. I don't know if we have that many millions available, uh, unless the rest of council wants to kind of move forward in that direction. I just don't want to get staff too far on down the road in a rabbit hole.
I agree with you 100%. The only point I want to make coming out of this meeting is those three projects is 84% of the facilities budget for next year. It's more than five sixths. Of that, half of it is out of COs. Over 54%, $21 million. The only thing I'm saying to the staff, they always say we want direction. I'm giving direction for me, not for anybody else, for me. I will not be supporting $21.1 million in COs for those three projects. You guys can find it from somewhere else. I'm very excited about that, but I'm telling you where I'm at. All I'm saying.
Yes, sir. Talking about that in, uh, in a part of it, uh, what is that going to do for the M and O, our operation and maintenance on these facilities? I know going back into our white paper that we had in February, there was a concern from staff there that, uh, you know, said that the council has a ability to come in and say, yes, these, some of these projects, they're all important, but some of them can be delayed. And they ask, you know, to do that. And then they mentioned also, uh, through there that execution, both managers that require, uh, an army of staff to oversee these projects. So I don't want us to get into a situation if we get a, a lot of projects going out that we have to, next thing we have to do is come in and add more staff just, you know, for these projects. I don't know if any consideration been given to the operation and maintenance of these facilities or, or not. That would help. We had some, you know, what's, what's the impact? In February, it was stated in the white paper that there'd be an impact on the staffing.
Yeah, I, I think the, I think the early part of the, uh, presentation by Priya talked about staffing and, and facilities maintenance in, in, in general or specific, the, the whole, the facilities staff itself. And as we continue to add, you know, facilities or increased sized facilities, then obviously at some point there's a staffing, you know, issue there. So I, I think some of that was, was addressed. I don't know if, if the, um, facilities assessment that we've talked about here will take into consideration some of the staffing needs and, and departmental staffing needs as we increase some of these. And I think that's where Councilmember Rowland was headed with that question.
Sure. And we're gonna, we're gonna do a staffing needs assessment along with the facilities assessment. So that's where that information will come from. As far as the projects that are in the CIP right now, there is a section in each CIP sheet that, uh, identifies the incremental operating and maintenance cost for each of these projects. So that's in there. It takes a look at, um, any incremental O and M cost, um, which are going to be, um, your utilities and those sort of things. It also takes a look at any additional personnel. So if it's a new fire station where we've got to expand the fire department, it includes those costs as well as any capital outlay, which for like a new fire station would be a new fire truck. That information is all in these individual project sheets in the CIP.
Yeah. And that brings up a good subject there too, uh, talking about that is that, uh, I know that on our projects that we go out on, uh, those that are doing the inspection from the city standpoint of it and doing work in those, that's charged back to that bond issue or isn't it on each project, isn't it?
That's correct.
Yeah. So do we have a number of what that usually runs into the budget process, uh, there, how much money that we're able to charge for salaries and stuff, uh, back in over time on these projects and how it impacts or doesn't impact on our budget for employees and what have you?
I, I don't have a number off the top of my head. Um, we can definitely pull that out. It's, it's readily identifiable and bull in the budget, but we can pull that out.
Yeah. And I, and I guess one of the concerns, Trent, was, was, uh, if we're going to be going out with these projects and, you know, we got X number of people working on them, but project manager out there, how much of their time goes back into that project in itself, not coming out of the daily budget that we have, you know, for, uh, salaries for employees?
A hundred percent of those employees that are dedicated to delivering these CIP projects are charged back to the, uh, capital fund. So they just designate how much of their time spent on each project and then it's allocated to each project.
Yeah, it'd be interesting just to find out, you know, how much, uh, on that is. Everybody's always, you know, especially on the, on the other side of the business, on the engineering side, you know, that's overhead, you know, and what have you. And you don't always get it back. But anyway, that, that would be good to find out, you know, that, that we have people that are project managers that are dedicated to these projects and how much of their time is actually paid for out of the bond issue or out of the CO or what have you for that particular project.
I, I know you guys don't like me comparing residential construction cost per square foot to commercial, but can you explain, um, I'm going to do an apples to apples comparison of why Fire Station 11 costs $923 a square foot and Fire Station 4 costs 638?
What were the two fire stations?
Four and 11.
So there's a couple of aspects with that, uh, Councilman Little is that Fire Station 11 is planned out for several years down the road. And so we take a look at escalation and we add in, um, an escalation factor per year based off of that. And that is what is attributing some to those increases. And then as we continue year by year, those are evaluated as they move forward, make sure that we're still either on par or reduce, or if the construction market has changed for commercial construction that would lead into a fire station or other commercial building than they're remodified.
Okay. Well, I, from what I read, uh, right now, construction costs are pretty high because material is hard to come by, but they expect that to somewhat subside, uh, after we get back to normal, whatever normal is going to be in the future.
Councilman Little, we're, we're all reading the same paperwork. Some project towards the January of 2022, but the, uh, the answer to that question is what does come to be the new normal, as you already mentioned, is that we're seeing elevated costs around. We're seeing labor shortages and just material deliveries add to lead time. And also in our recent construction, as you know, and as you all know, is that costs are not being held much longer than 30 to 60 days. And so we try to lock those in as quick as possible. That's why you have done, uh, contracts and with guaranteed maximum prices in packages separate until the full GMP is listed so we can get those prices locked in. So, um, some of the last articles I read were a little while ago, but we're looking in January of 22, but I'm still not going to hold my breath.
What's, or Robert, what's, what's the percentage that we escalate those? Is there default or it's got, do you know, was it 4%? 6%?
Three to 5%.
How much?
Three to 5%.
Compounding, so?
I'm pounding, so.
Station four was probably 10 years from Station 11?
Mm-hmm. Well, Station four is of course under construction right now. So that's locked in $20, $21. There's also a lot of site infrastructure, building that on the existing PSB site. And then Fire Station 11 doesn't go to construction until 2025. So it's five years of compounding, um, inflation, uh, built into this. And we'll refine that annually as we, as we bid out new projects and see what building construction costs are. But I think, uh, over, you know, the past 20 years, we've seen generally, you've got to be in about that 5% range on average, uh, to keep up with the construction cost.
5% increase in construction cost per year has been the average?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Before we move on, just, I, I want to kind of reiterate, go back to the, uh, uh, auditorium and the AC HVAC system. I know we're talking about COs there. What, what, how many years on those COs would be anticipated? 20? And the reason I bring that up is the current HVAC system that we're wanting to replace, we're 11 years into that and we're replacing it. So I want to be, I understand it's a vehicle and it's a tool to, to do that. I, I don't want to be 10 years down the road and replacing it and we still have got one year debt.
Sure. And I think that's something, you know, as we, uh, develop the plans for the new system, what is the expected life of that? Do we expect we'll get more than the system we've had? And then working with finance on what's, what's appropriate for the expected life of that asset.
Yeah. Cause I, I know we've done short-term debt before on various things, five-year debt, those types of things. I don't know if that's something we'll be looking at, you know, for, you know, that type of system, but that would be my only, not my only, that would be one of my cautions is if we go CO route that making sure that it's in keeping with the life, you know, life cycle of the HVAC system.
That's a good point. I mean, I think we could develop a policy that there's, that the certificate of occupancy cannot outlast the service life of the facility or the, um, um, the improvement that we're making.
Yeah. And, and, you know, again, COs are a, are a tool. Um, and I, you know, Councilmember Campcar is just, he, we, we certainly don't want to abuse the tool. I think that's where you're headed with it. And at the same time, I think if, if all of this has been compressed and looked at in, in a given year or 18 months, it's how can we take it and spread that out a little bit more? I think if I, if I hear you, I want to restate it the way I heard it.
Well, I, we're doing 46 million.
Right.
And some things are immediate and some things can do. And I agree with you. It can be moved.
So instead of 46 million in a year or 18 months, can that 46 million be spent in two years or three years as opposed, and, and it's instead of, you know, compressed into a year? And I think that's the, the general thought that you're, you're coming across. I want to move to, to drainage unless anybody else. Uh, Member Orlando, I know you had stepped out for just a second. I wonder if you had any questions?
I'm, I'm okay so far, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good deal. Let's go ahead and move on to drainage, uh, and then there'll be another round of question and, and an answer period for that. And six o'clock is a hard stop so we can get to our special meeting. And we have planning and zoning coming in at 6:30.
Continue on. Again, thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, for your input on facilities. Uh, we're going to be heading over and discussing drainage. We covering a few on goals and challenges, some partnerships. Master Drainage Plan will be presented by Raj, our city engineer, and then talking about near-term priorities. Let's talk a few little bit about challenges. Challenges that we have, uh, currently in our system or, I mean, I'm sorry, let me step back and talk about goals. Goals first is system reliability, sustainability, safety. Those are always important goals as we take a look at drainage, reduce structure flooding. We, we still want to be able to make sure that at the end of the day, we provide a high level of service to our citizens, meet while meeting our state and federal requirements. Continuing working with our partners, uh, Brazoria Drainage District Number Four, both are, is represented here by Lee Blumer and also John Gennaro, uh, General Manager of BDD4. Thank you for attending. Harris County Flood Control, our MUDs, HOAs, you know, PDC and those management districts within the city. Again, part of it also is O and M costs. What do we do to, uh, continue to, to control those? Develop, schedule and plan to implement our capital improvement programs from our modeling data and also with our partners. Then, uh, continuing to evaluate our existing drainage system from our local level, which would be our enclosed pipes, our roadside ditches that the city maintains to semi-regional, which would be what Brazoria Drainage District and the county maintain on some, uh, infrastructure that they maintain. And then also to our regional, uh, which is Hickory Slough, for example, Cowards Creek. And then, uh, with, uh, regards to Clear Creek, those maintained by either Harris County Flood Control or Brazoria Drainage District Number Four. Challenges. Challenges are always, uh, things we need to explore, understand how we got where we are. So those areas that were built, uh, prior to modern drainage standards, those are pre-firm maps and prior to our engineering design criteria manual as well. Rapid growth that the city has experienced over several decades, both in development from housing and also from commercial. And then taking the time to make sure that the drainage systems expand to serve that growth, either through detention and storage, uh, to control their pre-existing flows before it goes into, uh, current capacity of our regional infrastructure. Again, as we talked about in our water and wastewater side, we have uneven nature of growth. We have our, uh, older part of our city and the newer part, but I'm going to say is that that newer part that everyone talks about is aging. It's over two decades old. So we're starting to see those infrastructure needs go up higher, uh, for maintenance. Continuing to modify our drainage standards. Require of that, uh, evaluation for those systems to meet those changes, both, uh, predicated by FEMA and also in partnerships with, uh, our drainage districts and also with Harris County Flood Control. And with, as I said, with the federal requirements of FEMA. And then to talk, to mention that is that our existing funding levels from the general fund are inadequate to maintain our existing drainage system as we even continue to add to it. We talk about grant funding. Taking a look at grant funding is cost of benefit analysis. Those are challenging within our city. Our areas of low to moderate income, we have to meet that criteria and that can be difficult within the city limits. Our drainage projects are continually to increase. You know, we talked about a little bit ago about cost of materials, cost of labor. Those things are continually to rise and those provide challenges and limit, uh, what our costs to be able to do those projects. They'll increase that cost and, uh, so we need to find ways to mitigate that. Also, uh, within, within those drainage projects, as elevations rise for, uh, our floodplain based on new modeling data, replacement of the existing bridges and existing infrastructure, both water and sewer also need to be evaluated and removed or lifted out of the directions of the flows. Currently throughout the city, as you know, we live in a very flat area. So a lot of our shallow drainage conveyance system, as I said, is shallow and it takes a challenge or a wide surface area to be able to drain. Again, ownership of the drainage system. So for example, uh, our major thoroughfare, uh, FM 518, Anvil Road, uh, those are maintained by Tech Dot Two. We have to partner with them. And that leads me into what we want to talk about partnership and, and responsibilities. The city is responsible for enclosed pipe system within the city, our manholes, inlets, roadside ditches. We do have some regional detention basins such as, uh, East Mary's Detention Basin and also West Mary's Creek Detention Basin. We need to do annual inspection on all of our city HOA and commercial detention basins. That's done annually. Brazoria Drainage District Number Four is responsible for our regional channels and roadside ditches that they maintain. We also have, they also have their own regional detention basins. Maintenance of many of our city detention basins are per inter-local agreement and a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with them as well. That is, is vital. Clear Creek Maintenance on the Brazoria side is maintained by them as well. Harris County Flood Control, Clear Creek Maintenance on the Harris County side. They also are in charge of taking care of the Clear Creek Improvement Project of about $295 million. Uh, they have taken that on to be able to, uh, address, uh, that project. And then finally, our MOUs, I'm sorry, our MUDs, our HOAs, commercial development, uh, Pearland Economic Development Group, and also, uh, those municipal management districts that are in there all take care of their local detention ponds in their respective developments. Give a little history is that in partnership with BDD4 is since 2003, we've created over 2,600 acre feet of detention capacity among the four major areas that flow into Clear Creek. That's Clear Creek proper, Hickory Slough, Mary's Creek, and also Cowards Creek. Additionally, in our 2019 bond proposition drainage, we also added about approximately $30 million of drainage projects as well. Those were identified through our Hurricane Harvey After Action Report that was done by the Engineering Department, um, to be able to propose those areas. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn this over, presentation over to Raj. He is our city engineer overseeing and talking about our drainage model.
Thank you, Robert, and good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmen. Uh, I'm going to take you from here and talk about our master drainage plan 2019. So this 2019 master drainage plan was a joint venture between City of Pearland and BDD4. So it, it plays an important, important role for our cities to improve our drainage infrastructure. So what we did in this master drainage plan is we did study our drainage system on a macro level. So with all of the master drainage plan is most of the time studies drainage, ditches and conveyance system on a macro level because it, it, we, we cannot go to micro label at master drainage plans. And it has identified several of existing system deficiencies and also identify future needs where we need to be in future. So with this master drainage plan, we are able to, uh, identify the projects and prioritize the projects and come up with the cost for future projects. And ultimate outcome is. And ultimate outcome is like CIP mats showing locations of fading of projects and completion master plan report. So next. Here, I may be able, going to repeat something that Robert already mentioned. We can, what we can see here is our complex nature of drainage system. It consists of several hundred miles of drainage conveyance system consisting of the storm sewer ditch system and major and minor, smaller ditches as well as detention ponds. So why I would like to say it as complex is there are a couple of things that makes it complex and challenging. One is hundreds of miles of detention system of different types and natures. So there are storm sewer systems going into little ditches, maintained ditches and unmaintained ditches going into the major ditch systems. The second one making it complex is ownership. These detention drainage systems is owned by the city as well as our, other our partners like Brazoria Drainage District Number Four, MUDs, even Tech Dot owns and maintains some of the ditch system along major thoroughfares and also Harris County Flood Control District. So different partnerships and creates little challenges and opportunities too. The third thing that make it challenging is because of our topography. We are in tabletop. It's very, very flat and it's very hard to define the real drainage boundaries. So what it means is when there's real drainage boundaries, we know exactly where water flows from one side to other side. But in our system, when there's a little bit of rainfall, we know the water is flowing in one direction. As the time progresses and water level increases in the creeks and in the ditch system, we can see the water is going from reverse directions. It is because it is shallow. So one analysis will not be able to address those kind of situation because if we just assume minor storm events, we will be addressing that. But when it goes beyond that minor flooding events, then it goes to the other sides and it impacts from one drainage boundary to the other drainage boundaries. Here in the picture, we can see blue lines, network of blue lines. Those are the lines represents ditches and conveyance system primarily owned and maintained by BDD4 in county side. The orange lines are the storm sewer system that is maintained by City of Periland. And here we cannot, we don't see the, or the ditch system that within the City of Periland's road right of way and owned by and maintained by the City of Periland. Apart from that, what we can see is they're like a bunch of squares of different colors and each of the colors represents different entities who owns and who maintains. The teal color one are maintained by MUD. So MUD is also MS4. So they have responsibility to maintain the ponds and also responsibility to submit report to TCAQ on annual basis. But they do joint venture with the city, so our report includes their report when we submit annual report to TCAQ. Blue ones represents the detention ponds owned by the city. The orange colored squares represents the detention ponds owned by BDD4. And the purple color are the detention ponds owned by private entities which includes HOAs and other private commercial properties. City of Periland Engineering Department, our inspectors goes and inspect all of those ponds, purple ponds. We don't inspect green ponds. We don't inspect BDD4 ponds because they are themselves MS4 and they are responsible in maintaining those detention system. Here we can see our major regional detention that Robert mentions, mentioned about 26,000, 2,600 acre feet of detention ponds. So most of them are, we see them when we travel along Magnolia or on other streets. So East Mary's Creek, West Mary's Creek, Swick Pond, all those different ponds are regional detention ponds and most of them, those ponds are joint venture between City of Periland and BDD4. The, the one that is sits on the south side of, of the city is Cowards Creek Detention Pond. That is the biggest detention pond that we have in the city and it's about 1,100 acre feet. Now, let me talk about Master Drainage Plan. What is Master Drainage Plan? How it relates to our capital improvement projects? How it relates to our partners and how it relates to our future developers? So what we do in Master Drainage Plan is it helps us to document existing drainage infrastructures. So the existing drainage infrastructure consists of the rivers, basins, and detention pond system as well as the bridge system. So with those information, we can use our hydraulic modeling, HNS model to define the capacity of existing infrastructure as well as determine existing tool flood hazards in our watershed. So again, this is macro label drainage plan. What it means is like when we do these kind of drainage studies, our current hydraulic models, we apply the flows at the river level. So we can, the, what that means is flooding starts from the river. Whereas in natural environment, we can see the flooding upstream side in the neighborhood as well as the streets. But this model shows flooding from the river. So as the water surplus elevation in the river goes up, then it creeps into the neighborhood and it creeps into our homes. Whereas in real scenario is can be reverse order. So what we do in Master Drainage Plan is we apply 24-hour rainfall depth. That is, we assume like it's uniformly applied and it's applied at the river, at the river or base, river, river, not at the, our homes. So for projects to identify micro level projects, like what are the needs of our neighborhood, that is based, that will be still be based on our experience, experience, history of flooding and citizen complaints because that still helps to identify this other CIP projects that helps neighborhood drainage to improve. So with this, we get to identify the drainage improvement projects and come up with the project needs and prioritize different kind of projects, whether it needs to be bigger CIP projects or smaller projects that needs to be looked at at micro label. Okay, this is 2019 Master Drainage Update and we are planning to do it on five-year interval. The last one was 2019. Next one will be in 2024. We will start process sometime since 2022 to go through the next MDP update. This one shows our watersheds within City of Periland and BDD4 jurisdictions. All those areas depicting blue shade is, goes to Clear Creek and only about 10% of the City of Periland's drainage area goes outside of Clear Creek. So what it means is like when we have Clear Creek drainage improved, we are going to see a little bit improvement on our other systems too. Because as long as that Clear Creek doesn't flow faster and quicker, we are, will not be able to push our water from upstream to downstream side faster than quicker. So that is going to be a bigger project. I'm looking for that project to happen as soon as possible so we see good benefit. Okay, this is one of the outcome of Master Drainage Plan. There are several of different slides and outcome of Master Drainage Plan. Here it depicts the summary of the outcome. So one of the outcome that we can see here, existing level of service. What that means is what happens, how our storm sewer system, how our creeks behave, respond to three-year storm event or five-year storm event or 100-year storm event. So it helped us to identify, to provide us with the knowledge that when we get three to five year of storm event, that means like 4.8 to about seven, eight inches of rainfall in 24 hours, our creeks such as Hickory Slough already over tops the top of banks. So water surplus elevation already goes at the top of Hickory Slough. That means we will start seeing flooding if we get a little bit more rain than that 4.8 to five inches within 24 hour. But, but that is our assumption that it happens in 24 hours. It doesn't always happen that way. So what ends up happening is we get three inches of rainfall in one hour. So to address those kind of situation, we need to, it is, it will be based on our experience and history of that flooding. And we identify those projects and go from there to see like what needs to be done so that we can remove, improve those kind of flooding situation at that condition. So with these, what it tells us like Hickory Slough, Mary's Creek and Cowards Creek, all of those creeks are bare minimum three to five year level of service. So to make it from three to five year to 100 level of service is a big and massive project. So it is very hard. That's why when we did Master Drainage Plan, we had different alternative analysis done. So what those different alternatives analysis was, we did for 10-year, 25-year, and 100-year level of service. What it takes to do the, improve the drainage system to take it to from three-year to 10-year or 10-year to 100-year. So those analysis were done and damage assessment, flood damage assessment was performed. So what flood damage estimate does it? It just tries to find how much does it cost to improve the drainage system? And how much does it cost if we didn't improve the drainage system? So the cost, present value of that cost over 50 years period was compared to identify the alternatives. So when we compare those alternatives, how much apart from that cost analysis, how much land can be removed from 100-year floodplain? How many structures can we remove from 100-year? How many miles of lanes can be removed from 100-year floodplain elevation? All of those different scenarios, criteria was applied to identify the projects and to prioritize the project. That's how we came up with alternate two for Hickory Slough, whereas we went to 25-year for Mary's Creek. So these alternative two are the goals for now for the City of Periland to move from three-year to five-year to 10-year for Hickory Slough and 10-year to Cowards Creek and 25-year to Mary's Creek. Apart from that, it also gave us how much detention is needed in each of the basins and how much cost would it cost, would it require to accomplish those kind of improvements? So what it tells is it solidifies, it identifies the detention need. It also identifies the right-of-way need. So that right-of-way need is very essential primarily for BDD4 because those ditches, those creeks are owned by BDD4. And every time we get the plat, we already know that, okay, how much additional right-of-way is needed and need to be dedicated. So every plat goes to BDD4 and they identify, they find that, okay, we need this much of right-of-way based on the Master Drainage Plan and they acquire that before we approve those construction plans. So it is very essential to have this kind of Master Drainage Plan for current and future projects. This is, again, a outcome of our Master Drainage Plan report. And here we can see the downstream side of Hickory Slough. Each of the creeks were divided into several segments and for each of the segment, analysis was done to come up with the total acres, total acres of the land requirement, total detention requirement, as well as the cost to remove and replace all these structures. Because we cannot just improve the ditches without replacing the bridges because all of those bridges are sits below 100-year water source elevation and it blocks upstream. So for each of these improvement, we need to consider all those structural repair and remove, repair and replacement. That's why the cost is tremendously high. So and in one hand, we identify, okay, where we need to put our projects. If we look at this segment, we already know that we're going to put, expand McHard Road Detention Pond that is going to be built as a part of McHard Road. It is going to be expanded with the help of BDD4 and City of Periland Joint Venture. And that's, that's in this locality. As well as we've identified several of, bought out several of the homes and residents in the downstream end of the Hickory Slough near Clear Creek Confluence. So that will be going to be another area where we will have our massive detention pond in future. So it, again, it identifies the project sites, where we need, what we need. Apart from that, it also helped us to apply for grant application because without this, we would not know how much cost we need, what is needed and how to achieve those goals. So this helped us to go for grant applications too because we will not be able to gather all this information all of a sudden, even though there's money. So to support those, this kind of Master Drainage Plan will be very, very helpful. I'm almost, I'm almost done. This is the last slide for me. So there are like several outside agency-led projects working in our City of Periland vicinity and each of these projects are very, very helpful to reduce the flooding in our area. So one of the major one is Harris County Flood Control District's project, Clear Creek Federal Drainage Improvement Project. And it is scheduled to be completed in 2028 based on our monthly meeting, by monthly meeting with Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee. There is one Dagro Detention Pond. This is, that this detention pond is located a little bit downstream of Still Highway 288 and north side of Clear Creek. It is under construction. Use your detention pond, it, Harris County Flood Control District has issued a design RFU. So it is, is going to be designed pretty soon. City of Periland and BDD4 has already identified two projects that I talked about, McHard Road Detention that is scheduled to be done in 2022. It is expansion of existing detention pond built as a part of McHard Road. And there's another one, Hastings Canyon Road Detention. There, City of Periland has a lot of property that can be converted into detention ponds and that's in general location that, location that our Master Drainage Plan has identified for future detention pond. So this is between City of Periland and BDD4 as well as we meet with BDD4 on a monthly basis to talk about their projects and our drainage projects and discuss about what needs to be done, how we can improve our partnerships. And BDD4 shared their five-year Master Drainage Plan. I have pointed out a couple of bigger projects that they have in its next five years. Royal Road Detention Pond, Clear Detention Pond, and Hood Ditch, and Hood Ditch Improvement. And all of these are part as a result of Master Drainage Plan because all of those are identified in Master Drainage Plan. From here, I will give back to Robert.
Thank you, Raj. Our next slide that we have is what's currently in our five-year CIP. As you'll note, that only three years are funded. These are funded through general obligation bonds, voter-approved bonds. So this is as far as we have. The rest of the projects are unfunded after 2025 until we have another bond issuance. Current projects, looking forward to completion. These projects are either in design currently and then we'll be heading towards instruction coming up. Currently, contracts that'll be coming to you in the future will be these three, both, all three of these are associated with our 2019 bond program. And finally, just to visit a little about future projects that Raj had mentioned as well, was our Clear Creek project. But we have some other challenges as we go along is about what is drainage criteria, city criteria versus Atlas 14. This is a continual discussion as we have with our partners with Brazoria Drainage District, Brazoria County themselves, Harris County, et cetera. We're all having those discussions on what the impacts are. And part of it is also we're waiting for Harris County to finish their modeling of the entire county and waiting to see how Clear Creek is impacted due to Atlas 14. System-wide drainage update, Raj mentioned that. We tried to do that and heading towards our first one that we did in 2019 and then trying to update that as we go along to two-dimensional modeling. FEMA firm map updates. It's important as we take a look, it took us over 20 years to get our current maps. Let's take a look at what the impacts are when Atlas 14 comes in, what that may happen, how we adopt, or how do we take a look at what that means. Hickory Slough Sports Complex Detention, that's 2019 bond program. And then Veterans Drainage Improvements, Pine Hollow Drainage Improvements, those are unfunded projects, opportunities potentially maybe with the Stormwater Utility Fee or Future Bond Program. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Pearson to ask any questions.
Ready for your feedback and questions, Mayor?
All right, we'll start this direction. Member Orlando, do you have any questions?
I think just one, if we could go back to slide 32. So I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So I mean, just using the Cowards Creek line item as an example, we currently, it only has the capacity to service a less than three-year event. If we spent $325 million, that would get us up to being able to service a 10-year event?
You are correct, sir.
So, okay, so I, I just think this is really illustrative as we're talking about the drainage section of just the scale of these issues. I mean, we're talking right now about our, you know, our entire general fund budget being $100 million and that, that covers literally, you know, our entire police department, our entire fire department, all of our parks department. It, it covers all the operations of the city. It, it covers all the operations of the city. It, everything that people think of as the city of Pearland. Just to improve this one watershed from a, a less than three year event to a 10 year event costs more than three times what we spend in an entire year on all of our like core general fund city services. And I, I think that's just worth taking a moment to step back and say, like, wow, this is the, the scale of the, this is the magnitude of the problem that we're facing in terms of keeping people safe in their homes with these increasingly perilous rain events. And so I, I just kind of, I wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly because that was really startling to me. I, and I know, you know, this is only one piece. This 325 is of course only one piece. So, um, yeah, I, I appreciate that we're talking about this today and, and getting a lot more color on it because this is probably, uh, yet mathematically and, and financially, the, the biggest, in terms of our long-term priorities, gonna, gonna cost the most to, to get right. So.
Councilmember, I was, this was a, a slot I was gonna camp out on. So I'm glad you did. I just have one question before we move on. So on the detention volume, so Cowards Creek, again, the 5,475 acre feet of, of detention volume. Is that as we increase, uh, the size of the creek, that's what we're creating? Or is the 5,475 additional detention volume needed?
That's additional.
Okay.
Additional to meet the 10 year with the upper limits.
And the reason I asked that is in Raj's presentation, he talked about, uh, getting additional right of way through, uh, DD four and our own efforts when we go to plating property. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yes, sir. Let me explain because when we improve the conveyance system, even when we, when we increase the size of the conveyance system, we need to provide additional detention. Same thing is happening for Clear Creek project because we cannot let more water go downstream. To control that kind of impact, we have to add detention system. And all this like 325 million project is we lumped all those projects in one and presented as one project. But it has divided into several different, several viable size, uh, projects. It can be divided like Hickory Slough. I, I showed like downstream side of Garden Ode Road. That's a lower segment. Even in the lower segment, we can divide, chunk it to viable size so that we can fund that project in subsequent, subsequent years.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure I understood that was in addition to the creek. Okay.
Member Carbon.
I guess sticking with the slide, do we have a handle for what, what type of damages occurred during, I guess Harvey? And, and which of these watersheds, just to get a magnitude?
Sure. Uh, councilman, as we take a look at Harvey, those areas are going to be closer to, to Clear Creek. This is talking about trying to keep the 10 year event. We'd have to go back and take a look on our map overall. So that's something we'll have to report back and give additional information as to those areas.
I mean, if we were to go in and I know we've looked at some buyout numbers around Clear Creek.
Yeah, those were the part of that analysis because when we do, there's a model developed by FEMA to account for all those kind of, uh, losses. And we got those repetitive loss information from FEMA and on annual basis. And those information were provided to our consultant to input into their models. So there's HEC model, that's one, that's the damage assessment model. And that's based on flood, flood level and the finished floor elevation of those. Again, this is just estimated. Uh, it's not a hundred percent accurate, but it provides some sort of guidance to the city and to us about, okay, this is the loss. And all these losses are based on history of, history. So that's how they capture history, history of the losses. And that's how they analyze, okay, if in 50 year time period, how much more loss would be there? Versus if we improve the drainage system, how much can we save? So those two different, uh, losses versus benefits are compared to come up with the cost management analysis. And only that will not qualify for us to be, to able to justify the projects. Because if we look at those costs, it is tremendously, uh, big compared to the benefit. That's why other parts like how many lands can be removed from hundred year flood plain? How many miles of the roadway can be removed from hundred year flood plain? Is that land developable in future? Because we can remove hundreds of miles of acres of land that is not going to be developed in 50 years. So all those need based assessment analysis was also part of these analysis to come up with these costs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to see a little bit more of that so we can see. Yeah, we see the cost side, but what, if, if, if we set up here and pass the bond for $600 million, what is that? I don't think it's feasible, but what does that actually do? And, you know, what, what are the benefits from, from spending this? I think it'd be, it'd be nice to, to see in these different watersheds.
I, I think, I think there's a map of repetitive flood losses. And I think that would be important to see as we, as we look at this. Cause the repetitive flood losses weren't, I mean, Harvey was the exception, not the norm, if you will, right? And, and yeah, it could happen again because it happened once. But I think there's other storms that are kind of your norm. You know, we, we do have a hundred year event. That's 13, eight, you know, it's 13 inches over 24 hours ish. That happens more frequently than 50, you know, 50 inches in four days. And so I think, but the repetitive flood loss map would be interesting to see exactly where they are, what's that value? And then it goes back to the cost benefit analysis.
I think before we, you know, as we were to bring any new slate of drainage projects in front of you, we, you know, we would have that data and that information to be able to show what the benefits are, you know, to make sure it's, it's not more cost effective to buy out than to do the project. And then at the same time, you know, there's other ancillary benefits of removing, uh, land that, that, that is prime or potential for development in the future. By doing these projects, you may remove significant areas from the flood plain. Um, whereas now they may not be able to be developed and that's got its own benefits for the city in the long range, long term.
Raj, something you said piqued my interest. So I'm curious, um, kind of what it means. But you were saying that you basically were a tabletop or very flat. Is, is that something that is common in our area? Or is that something that's kind of unique to Pearland?
It is kind of common to our area because Houston is called Bayou Cities and Bayous are Salo River. So when it comes to confluence of those two streams, we don't know which, because this, in all this master drainage plan, we imagine that each of the little drainage basin is separate. So there is no mutual interaction between Harris, uh, Hickory Slough and Clear Creek or Mary's Creek and Clear Creek. So it is independent. If we do that, the way that Harris County Flood Control District is doing right now with MapNext, it is mutually interaction. Those, so those creeks interact with each other and then we will be able to know better than what we have today. So we.
That's kind of like where I was going is are we, you know, kind of looking at and trying to work with other jurisdictions to make sure that what we're doing is not gonna, you know, be interrupted by someone else's lack of investment, I suppose. Robert Shaken said yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, councilman. We are, I mean, we partner with Harris County Flood Control at, because they're the ones that are representing FEMA as we say, so we think take that information.
Hey, I think it's definitely one of those topics where, you know, if we're being proactive in something and we spend money and people are gonna react later after we've spent the money, done the improvements and say, why are we spending all this money? It doesn't flood. And it's a, well, it doesn't flood because we made the improvements. So it's, it's, you know, I, I agree with Member Carbon sentiments also trying to understand the kind of the scale of this and what it would end up saving. But, uh, I was just curious about that. And when you said that, for I guess for smaller events where we may have the water flowing one direction and then it may end up flowing a different direction, being a different scale. Is there anything that from, uh, that we would have to monitor or redo on a recurring basis? Are these types of projects, projects that you do and they just kind of, you know, handle, um, I guess whatever the major rain event, but for those more, you know, recurring, more often rain events, are those gonna be issues or?
Yeah, I think that will be, uh, in our next, uh, model update. When we go from this one dimensional modeling to two dimensional modeling, it will capture those kind of events and it will show us what happens when one system gets a lot of rainfall and other system may not be getting as much rain. So how those two interact and how that impacts the neighboring property, that we will know after we use MapNext, that's, uh, two dimensions model. So, uh, what we're waiting right now is because Harris County Flood Control Districts is still working on Clear Creek. And they're planning to send us, if they, they, they didn't change their schedule, send us the preliminary map in October.
And does subsidence or anything have anything to do with this as well? And I mean, is that something that we take into account? And I mean, as we move forward, looking forward five years from now, is that gonna be a completely different, you know, projection?
Councilman Hernandez, uh, because it's based off of topography, so anything that changes over the time of topography, you know, will affect drainage.
Well, this is all, this is all super fascinating to me. Obviously this is outside of my, you know, um, you know, professional understanding. I mean, y'all, y'all get so deep into this stuff sometimes, but you said that it really, uh, piqued my interest and I just wanted more information. So I appreciate you, you know, illustrating all of this for everyone and kind of showing that this is drainage, just one of those things, I guess, that just is an ongoing thing. It's just not something where we're gonna invest and fix something and be done with it. And, you know, wipe our hands and move on. I guess it's something we constantly have to monitor, constantly have to invest in. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that was something that was, um, understood by me. So whenever I'm talking to people about it, that's something that I can help, uh, relay to them as well. So I appreciate all of your input. Thank you.
Trent, Josh, can you pull up the slides, say analysis on it, the PDF? And then after that, we'll tee up plan in Drainage CIP. Uh, and first I want to thank the folks from, um, BDD four for taking time to be over here. I know Commissioner Rogers, Brennan and Mooney are really, really focused on this. And I'm glad that they have the valuable members of the team out here to, to be here at this meeting. So thank you guys for attending.
What was the first slide or?
Analysis. It's got the picture of the city with the red lines on it. Um, the, everybody knows this is my favorite subject times like a hundred. Uh, and I care about this quite a bit. Um, it's one of the reasons I, I, I decided to get into public service. Uh, the, the key thing that I guess I would, would tell you is this is super, super abstract. It's super, super dull. It's super, super boring, but it's super, super important. And so this is in that box of DBI dull but important. Uh, nobody notices your drainage ditch until it doesn't work. And then all of a sudden, that's the number one priority that you have. Um, and, and for us, we just have a, a long way to go. I, I think, um, this is not as sexy as a fire station or a police station. Um, those are no less important, but, um, you know, the, the public safety is going to have to start being drainage as well. And drainage will be public safety. So this is out of the gigantic, um, I want to say it's like a 600 page study. Um, this is one of the exhibits. This is a visual of, I guess, the overlapping jurisdiction of BD four in the city of Pearland. You see their logos up in the upper right. The way I try to intellectualize this for people in my neighborhood and, and neighbors and when I'm talking to, to the general public, uh, this is like your, your circulatory system with your heart. And on the, the left side, which is where the west part of town is, uh, you don't see any lines here. The red lines are bad. Uh, the, the lines over there, drainage is flowing, the capacity is there. As you go east where those red lines are, is where you have, um, less capacity. So you don't have water moving as much as the rain events get bigger. And so the way I articulate this to people, because this is really abstract and hydrology is super boring, is, um, one side of your body, the circulatory system is going great, blood is pumping and moving great. The other side of the system, you have cholesterol and you have the, the circulatory system of an 80 year old who eats bacon every day. So let me ask you a question. What side do you want to be on when the rain comes and the water is circulating? Do you want to be in the part where it's all clogged up and the, it's not moving? Or do you want to be on the side where it's, it's going real good? Um, and as Robert pointed out, that infrastructure west of 288, um, that is still 20 years old. That, that is in decent shape, but in 20 years from now, it will need repairs. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Upton?
Uh, Councilman Cam Carr, it's aging of 20 years already and it needs maintenance and maintenance today.
Okay. And the areas that are red where they've got the cholesterol, those need work today.
Well, the areas are red are also going to be also along roadside ditches and that capacity in the lower bottom corner also talks about it's a three year capacity. And that's what our design criteria is for roadside ditches is three year capacity. They still need to be maintained and operated and cleaned. Yes.
And as we continue to develop and, and work and, and go towards that area, those improvements will have to come.
Yes, sir. Improvements have to come to be able to handle any new development.
Um, and can we click up the plan? It has all the plans for the drainage, the master plan. So this is also from the study in 2019 and, uh, this is the implementation plan. And you can kind of just scroll through here. Uh, I just, it kind of gives you the scale of large CIP reserve, small CIP, small O and M. And as we keep going, you start realizing that there's like, there's a lot of money here. There's a 121 million dollar plan. There's a $60 million segment of 52 and we'll, we'll just keep going. I, I don't want to belabor the point overly. Um, there's a hundred million dollar one. There's a 252 one. That's a good one. Um, and then it goes into the smaller ones that are less than, let's call it 2 million. I mean, these are all the projects that the team has said we need to do on some level, how quickly. I mean, that just gives you the scale of just how many projects are out there. Um, now I want to show you our drainage CIP now, um, uh, the last, last one. And so you saw all those millions of dollars for the general public's benefit and we got 11.3 million dollars. And this is our, this is our big list that we're, we're hacking at. Um, and so this just kind of tells you the scale of the problem and how hard we have to work. And I, I think this team, I think BD four, I think Harris County, uh, the Brazoria County Commissioners Court want to do the work. But the, the problem is large and we have to just start hacking at it and working at it. Um, what, what is, it hits me like a ton of bricks is, uh, the facility CIP for this year is $46 million coming up. And this is 11.3 for the next like three years. So it just kind of tells you where this is in the priority list in terms of, you know, if, if dollars is your budget is your priorities, that's where we are. And that, I mean, you spend money on shelter, you spend money on food. These are our priorities. You spend money for retirement. Well, on our priority list, this is just lower. Now, some of this, I think, I'm speaking for myself is this is hard. You have to be collaborative with other organizations. Engineering takes time, uh, getting the big yellow machine out there, uh, takes money. Um, but we have to move this up the list. So, uh, I'm, I'm encouraged with what we're doing, uh, but we need to do more. That's my message.
Member Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, great presentation, guys. I know a lot of work went into preparing it, uh, both the written material and Raj's presentation. Good job. Councilman Carbon kind of stole my thunder with his question, but, um, it'd be interesting to hear the, um, the question that he had, the response to the question he asked about what was the damage to Pearland from Harvey and, and looking at what we plan to spend to do some type of cost benefit analysis. The other thing, um, and looking at the map, all the improvements are west of Main Street. And, um, I know that Clear Creek is a, a future endeavor. And if the bulk of our drainage, uh, Pearland goes into Clear Creek, um, how do you guys anticipate, this is kind of more from my education. If we've got that much more volume going into Clear Creek and downstream, the, the improvements come later, how will that affect the neighborhoods that are west of 35? Green Tea, uh, La Paloma, which I have no interest in, um, Sleepy Hollow, the ones that are adjacent to, uh, Clear Creek. Any idea on how that might impact for the, um, future improvements to Clear Creek?
So, all, all, is the question how the project by Harris County Flood Control to improve Clear Creek?
All the improvements the city is doing and are west of Main Street. So if, if, if we have another Harvey type moment and those places have, uh, improved, but you still gotta dump that retention somewhere and it's going, a lot of us going into Clear Creek and the improvements haven't been done to Clear Creek further down or any type of improvements further down. How, how, how do you expect that to impact a west of Main?
I, I think any of the projects we're doing right now, you'll see incremental, very little differences. If, uh, you'll see them in the normal storms and a Harvey, it's going to be very similar to Harvey until the Clear Creek project is done. Anything?
Nothing to add, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Perez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I think maybe to, to answer, but I think your question was all these projects have a detention system component in there, so we don't increase the flow out of our city. Well, the, the idea is that the detention system, if, if Harvey becomes your hundred year event, you contain within that. So the, I, the principle is that we don't, we do everything we can within storms that we predict to prevent impact. to prevent impact to the properties to our to our east and to our south. I think Member Camp Car kind of highlighted kind of the importance of what we're doing and also the the lack of, the lack of volume is projects that we need that we've already identified. So I won't belabor that point. The one thing I do want to talk about quickly, because I know we're up against time, is the FEMA map update. First, Robert and Trent, just thank you for all the time you've spent with me talking about this in the past. Just kind of maybe giving more clear direction. I think what we can do interim or in the short term and the long term is we know that there's not, we really want to wait until after Clear Creek is complete before we have a full update to the maps. Or at least having Clear Creek complete would be, give us the best long term maps. But in the interim, I'd like to see about, as we're discussing funding for FEMA map updates. And we do, and we fund a LIDAR for the for the entire city so we can get better topography, feed that into the HECS models and possibly do spot letters of map provision, letter of map amendments where we know that there's some flaws into the map as opposed to waiting for Clear Creek or for the parts of the town that aren't connected hydraulically to Clear Creek, like Mustang, Bayou, I think Old Chocolate. Do that kind of in the interim. Because, you know, the discussion we've had is that we know the FEMA maps that were just adopted are flawed. We know that we have areas that are shown to be in the floodplain that's not accurate because there's improvements in the area that weren't included in those maps. So is there something we can do? And maybe, maybe there can be a tech memo and we can provide you direction on whether or not we want to fund an interim repair, for lack of a better term, to FEMA maps through letters of map provision, letter of map amendments, until Clear Creek is done. And then we hopefully either get funded or assist in funding a full remap of all of the, all of them.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I didn't realize I left it on when I asked the question. Councilman Perez, with regards to, one of the things is, is hopefully if it still stays on schedule was they were talking late October for Harris County Flood Control to have a first rendition of what the Clear Creek model would look like. As we go through those reviews, that information can be made available. We have planned in our budget to do a, of course, the master plan update and taking a look at what that would look like with Clear Creek partnering with the Drainage District Four to partner on that, to continue to take a look at what MAPNEXT does, taking a look at our models as two dimensional. So it's dynamic. And then impact in terms of overlay, what does those standards do to our current situation as it stands now? And then come back and and start doing some discussions overall internally to see what happens.
Yeah, and I and not to, not to get too, not to get into too much detail. We would benefit that more if we had an updated LIDAR of the city where we could, we could input current topography and current improvements into any model updates. So, you know, maybe possibly getting that funded as part of a capital project and then looking at interim solutions in between when the map, FEMA is not going to let us update the maps until the channel improvements are done. So can we do something in the interim? And then possibly, Mayor, with your support, talking to some of our neighboring communities. I've had some preliminary conversations with them, but I think it would certainly benefit if we, if we were working together and conversing together, maybe get some assistance for them about funding some of these updates where it would impact them. If we update our maps at the same time they do, they can help us offset some of the costs and we both get benefit.
Mayor Rowan?
Yeah, I think a lot of it's been said, but, you know, in the in the past. And I guess the biggest thing is, you know, we're we're getting something done possibly before long on Clear Creek. You know, we've gone through the process of years ago of, and I guess, since nineteen sixty one, and hasn't done a thing. But then we had problems out of Friendswood and and League City and Dickinson. And especially in Friendswood, they they didn't want anything done to Clear Creek because they want to keep it pristine. And and I kind of asked them, the mayor, whether one day, if if you get out of bed and you got water up to your knees, does it still look pristine? But, I mean, that stopped us on getting output. Everything was going through Clear Creek and going down. And so we didn't have any other choice but to spend money. And and for the detention and things of that nature. But, you know, one of the things that that concerns me on some of it, you know, on these HOAs and detention sites, after a period of years, you know, they silt up and and they really don't have the capacity that they did in the beginning. But the the HOAs don't have money to do it. Matter of fact, we talked to DD four about doing some of that work here at the city, but it was so high we couldn't afford it, you know, for DD four to go in and clean it. But but it is, I mean, you know, we we spend a lot of money in doing it and nobody ever does anything to it. And so then after a period of time, the capacity is 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 a lot different than when it was in the beginning. And so, you know, if we're going to have a program, we need to, you know, to to take a look at that and see if we can work out something to share the cost or whatever. Everything else, I think, is going through here.
Yeah, I I did have a couple of questions. We we talked about muds and also, I think it was slide twenty eight. But we, you know, we've got a reliance on the mud districts and the HOAs and and what they're doing. Obviously, muds eventually will go away. Which then my assumption is it's going to revert to the HOA. So and I I live in a mud district and also have an HOA. In fact, the map's wrong here. It's showing that the mud is responsible for my subdivision and it's not, the HOA is. And to Woody's point, HOAs by their nature don't have the capacity to really do some of these large scale maintenance. They can mow the grass, yes. But in our particular situation, I'll use it as an example. You can drive around many of these detention ponds and you will see erosion like crazy around many of these ponds. And HOA doesn't have the capacity to to do it. They don't have engineers, they don't have legal, I mean, they they don't have the capacity to be able to do that. I'm fearful as many of our mud districts do what they need to do, and that's pay their debt off. And they don't become, they're not a mud anymore. That gets reverted to an HOA and you've got really big maintenance issues out there in the future. And so I know in in some of our Shadow Creek muds, for example, are about to pay out and be and be done. That's a great thing. That means Skirm is going to be around to to do the maintenance. What I would rather see is more of a master mud, if you will, for those that are coming out of a mud into a maintenance mud, lack of a better term. I don't have a, the the mud guys in front of me to tell me what that'd be called. And and instead of having, you know, the debt tax and they would just simply have their their, you know, maintenance and operation tax, probably a seven, eight, ten cent tax sitting on it and and can, you know, use that for their maintenance ongoing. Because Woody's right, these things will silt, you're going to have erosion, you're going to have those types of things over time. And they're going to have the capacity with the with the right consultants to be able to do that and handle that and handle it in a in a right, you know, in a right fashion. So I would encourage us, if if some of these mud districts are looking to pay out, what do we do for that ongoing maintenance instead of the HOA? I'd much rather some maintenance organization like a mud or something like that have the have the capacity to to do that. And I know we're getting short on time, but I, we're we're talking CIP and we're talking drainage. I would be, I would be remiss if I didn't push Willow Crest as hard as possible tonight to get it bid. I know that we still have the detention site to finalize and require and acquire. It seems to me we can bid while we are finalizing that and get that out. I want to be careful because we're going to finish a tropical season here in another six weeks. And we're going to have another tropical season next year. I would really like to have that complete before the, I guess, twenty three tropical season. That's going to be tight, but it seems to me we need to be on the street bidding and getting this thing out. And these are, this isn't a greenfield, this isn't brand new construction. This is a fifty year old subdivision with four hundred homes in it that are going to need this in the event we have another tropical. So I would, like I said, I get emails from the subdivision often. I know Robert does as well. And it would be nice to to have this. And that was a bond program that we can certainly highlight that we've gotten out the door, done and and completed. It'd be nice to have it completed before the June twenty third, twenty twenty three, you know, storm season hits. Brent, you had something on that?
I was just gonna say, as soon as we complete the plans, which they're scheduled for their final review at the end of this month, assuming no major revisions at that point, we will be bidding the project. And then it's about an eighteen month construction phase, I believe, so.
Yeah, I I've talked to engineers as well. And I said, as you get ready to bid this thing, I don't want to see a twenty three storm season come up and that still be out there. It'd be nice to have that complete. So I don't even know what we could do from a incentive standpoint from the construction side. Quicker the better.
Sure, and as always, quicker the better. You know, there's some sequencing involved in that. So, I mean, we can, again, look at that and see if there's any way to accelerate.
And again, this is one that's historically flooded, so it'd be nice to to get them where they will be a lot more safe. So I know we've, I know we've got drainage fee discussion. We're also up against our six o'clock for the special meeting with six thirty, planning and zoning right behind it. Is there a way we can do drainage fee in the coming weeks? Or, I mean, this, this is going to take up some time and we're going to be, we're going to be pushing planning and zoning here.
Fair to be fair to get the next half hour business done? I think we probably should push that just so we can get you to have some discussion. We'll find a slot to figure that out.
Figure thirty minutes coming up the next, I mean, this is going to be on a ballot in May. It's not like this is going to be on a ballot in November. We've got a little bit of time to to have this discussion and we need to have this discussion, but also want to be mindful. We've got a special meeting here in a few minutes and I want to make sure that we we set our planning and zoning as upper success tonight as well. I have concurrence, or do y'all want to keep going?
Let's do the thirty minute.
I I saw some head shakes out there. Did y'all come for that?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean. Get to see us again.
I know, I know.
Jim's not getting paid by the hours, so it's all right.
Well, I don't know how much Ann get paid, she looks expensive, though. She always dresses so nicely.
All right, well, let's, so Josh, with that, I guess we need a little bit of time to switch from one to the other.
Yeah, give us about thirty seconds to to get that pulled up.
We got three minutes, so. Everybody wants to take a quick break. I'm going to call a an adjournment to our special meeting on our CIP program at five fifty eight.